At this time, I'd like to call and order the December thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, regular meeting of the Coffee County Board of Education Office. Order, at this time, I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Commander Tyra Reed and Commander Austin McKeon of our NJROTC. Everyone will rise for the, not naturally, but, but if anybody wants to say.
Right. Left. Left. Right. Left. Right.
This time, I'd like to invite Father John Collins from First Anglican Church, I'm sorry, Saint Andrews Anglican Church, to, uh, go right next to me for a first pass.
Little white church over the red building.
Where I got married. Thank you, Father.
This is two months in a row, gotta stop meeting like this. Distinguished Board, it is a pleasure to be able to come before you and to ask God's grace upon your meeting tonight, and, uh, the wonderful people who are being honored tonight as well. God is present, and, uh, I'd like to invite you here to the meeting tonight, so that His Holy Spirit would lead, guide, direct, protect, the children of the schools, and, uh, parents, and this whole community. We are indeed blessed to be in Douglas and Coffee County, and so, would you join me as we pray? Father, we give you thanks and praise for our community, for our board, for all who are present tonight, but most especially for the young people of Coffee County who attend our schools, who are guided and brought to knowledge in hopes of graduation. Father, we just ask that Your Holy Spirit would indeed fill this place tonight, and to lead, guide, all the decisions and discussion that is done, and to bless especially the people who are being honored tonight. Lord, we just ask your blessing, and we ask that you would indeed bless us this holiday season, the Christmas and New Year, that during the break, children would be especially amongst their families. We ask all this in the precious name of the One who is born this season, Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you again, God bless you. And Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Right, Board, at this time, I'd like to ask for adoption of the agenda. Any motion for that, please? Ms. Miller?
Yeah.
Second by Ms. Johnson, any discussion? All in favor of the adoption of the agenda?
Thank you. Yes, sir. When we begin our meetings, we first want to welcome everybody here, and thank you for coming tonight to our Board of Education meeting, this is a special night with the holidays upon us, but then also for our recognition tonight. We like to, to mention our mission and vision. Our mission is destination, graduation, for college career and life, and our vision is an equitable and excellent education for every student. We've asked our schools to prepare presentations or videos, and tonight, it's Coffee High presenting tonight, uh, a rendition of what our mission and vision meant to us here in Coffee County. So, we have our principal, Dr. Rowland, coming to with us tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Lee, and also the board for allowing me to this opportunity in Coffee High School, just to kind of give a little bit of a snapshot of what it means to us for our mission and vision statement. What are the thing, well, the major thing for Coffee High this year is that we're planting seeds. You know, I've read that one man plants another one, and we all know against the increase. So, when we're planting seeds in the young people of Coffee County, they're gonna grow for the rest of their lives, but they have to be warned. So, we are trying to encourage them, this is where warning begins, but it's not where it ends. So, we've got a video that's gonna kind of give us a little bit of the theme of what we're trying to get across to our young people this year.
The destination graduation for college career and life.
And our vision.
Of creating a solid community.
An equitable and excellent education.
For everything.
when they leave Coffee High School. One of the things that I was stressing also with students, you know, everybody, when students graduate, obviously they have to be able to read and write and well, and obviously do mathematical computations. The three things I think that, that cross over all boundaries, no matter what profession you go into, and that's to be a problem solver thing creatively and work well with others. So, if we can embed that in our lessons and our daily mission at the Coffee High School, we'll feel like we've been successful. So, that's just a, being a brief snapshot into some of the things we do for the young people at Coffee High School, and thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have the Coffee High Performing Arts Center. The board has been discussing the future of the Performing Arts Center at Coffee High. Of course, we are building a ten point five million dollar performing arts center at Coffee High School. There'll be nine hundred seats total in this performing arts center, six hundred seats on the first floor, and there will be three hundred seats in the balcony. It's gonna be a beautiful facility, something special for Coffee County, something like we've not had here. For years, as our band and our chorus and our drama has developed their productions, they've had to go to the college to have their productions and to have their shows. But the board and administration and the entire school system wanted to do a project in which our students would be provided a home for the arts in Coffee County. So, with the approval of the East Plus Four, the money was budgeted to build a performing arts center in Coffee County. So, we will have a nine hundred seat performing arts center for all of our performing arts to call home, just like we have a baseball stadium, we have a football stadium, we have other venues for those sports and extracurriculars, we will have a home for the arts in Coffee County. And it will be a facility that you all can be proud of, and we will use for many, many years. This facility is a fifty-year project, we expect it to be used for the next fifty years at least. So, at this time, our board has had conversations about naming the facility, and in discussing individuals who we felt would be fitting to name the facility after, uh, there were two names that just rose to the top, and, uh, oftentimes you go to performing arts centers, venues such as it, and they're named after people who had a very significant meaning to that community or that institutional organization. And tonight, we want to name the Performing Arts Center at Coffee High School. We've had discussion previous, so, uh, I'm going to make a recommendation, and, actually, two recommendations, and then we will have comments from our board members, after which there will be a vote, alright? And then we will welcome these family members or friends of the family to come forward. The superintendent recommends that the new Performing Arts Center at Coffee High be named the Clayton W. Mathis Performing Arts Center. They have a statement pertaining to Mr. Mathis. For those of you who had the pleasure of knowing Mr. Clayton Mathis, there are several adjectives that come to mind: teacher, administrator, sports enthusiast, GHSA football official, master gardener, world traveler, Presbyterian elder, lover of family with his wife, Nija Ann, and daughter Elizabeth, and a lover of the arts. Many may not have known this side of Mr. Mathis, but it is true. Following his tenure at Coffee High from nineteen eighty-four to nineteen ninety-two, Mr. Mathis brought the concept of Odyssey of the Mind from Coffee High to Ambrose Elementary in nineteen ninety-four. His wife, Nija Ann, had been very active with the organization, so, of course, he loved it too. A graduate of PK Young High School in Gainesville, Florida, Mr. Mathis earned his Bachelor of Science in Education and his Masters in School Administration from Georgia Southern University. He began his teaching career on the campus of Coffee High School in nineteen sixty-six as a history teacher. Upon his retirement in nineteen ninety-eight, he had dedicated his entire educational career to the Coffee County school system: teaching, coaching, central office administration, principal of Coffee Junior High School for twelve years, principal of Coffee High School for eight years, and retiring as the principal of Ambrose Elementary School after four years, a total of thirty-two years of service. Mr. Mathis was, and still is, to so many, one of the best administrators a student can have had in their life. He not only cared about the educational success of the boys and girls he taught, but their well-being as a person. Some of his former students, who are now successful professionals, have stated, "Mr. Mathis devoted his whole life to giving unselfishly to countless young people through his education career, as well as his voluntary time. Mr. Mathis gained total respect from his students merely by his caring attitude. He treated us as if we were his very own, teaching discipline and showing love simultaneously." Mr. Mathis shaped a lot of people over the years. His impact in my life was most evident at three levels. First, as my principal in junior high school, he held all students to the high moral standard taught within our homes and community. With just a pat on the back, he encouraged many of us during our turbulent years of adolescence. Secondly, as my baseball coach, here's where I began to understand what motivates this man: nothing less than a true desire to teach kids the joy of living out a dream, and the hard work it takes to achieve those dreams. He taught us how to look beyond our todays and consider what our tomorrows might be. Finally, as my friend, a wise man once said, "Friendship doubles our joy and divides our grief," and that is what I've experienced with my principal, coach, and friend. And finally, another individual stated, "It was Mr. Mathis that gave me direction and focus when I looked for the way to survive in a profession that had gobbled up more than a few. With his guidance and leadership, I learned how to do the job fairly and with respect for both the students and my fellow faculty members. Mister and Miss Mathis have been special people to me and to many who call Coffee County their home. It is no surprise that Mr. Mathis shared that the Coffee High class nineteen eighty-eight was his favorite. I'm honored to say that I was part of that class, and reaped the benefit that passed through in my life." So, that is the recommendation, the new Performing Arts Center will be named the Clayton W. Mathis Performing Arts Center. The next recommendation is the recommendation that the auditorium in the new Performing Arts Center at Coffee High be named the John M. Bailey Auditorium. Mr. Bailey was born in Wellsville, Ohio, where he attended school. After high school graduation, he earned a music scholarship to Dana Institute of Music, which is now known as Youngstown State. Mr. Bailey joined the Army, and during World War II, served with special services as a musician. While stationed in Belgium, he met and married his wife, Charlotte. After being discharged, he worked with a popular dance band traveling all along the east coast. His first teaching job was in Warrior, Alabama, where he organized the first marching band at Warrior High School. After two years, he was offered the teaching position at nearby Juanita High School. During this time, he was also a founding member of the Birmingham Symphony Orchestra. In nineteen fifty-eight, he went to Adlin County High School in Baxley, Georgia, for several years before coming to Douglas for the nineteen sixty-four, nineteen sixty-five school year. The Coffee High Comet Band was built into one of the largest bands around, bringing innovative ideas to halftime shows with music of the day, from the Beatles, Herman S. Hermits, and James Brown, to name a few. Mr. Bailey was a passionate football fan, and there was no sitting around during the game. He could see a touchdown developing and had the band ready with the fight song, the moment for referee's signal. Coach Billy Carrollton once came on one of the band buses after a hard fought Dodge Camming game and told Mr. Bailey that the band with its spirited music and cheers played a definite part in the win. After seven years of directing the high school and junior high bands, another music teacher was added, Mr. John O'Brien. Given the choice of schools, Mr. Bailey chose to take the junior high and various elementary schools, as he always loved to teach beginning students and have them develop before moving to the upper grades. Mr. Bailey retired from teaching in nineteen eighty-five, but continued to perform with friends and family. Mr. and Miss Bailey had eleven children, all of which graduated from Coffee High School. And the second recommendation is that the new Performing Arts Center at Coffee High, the auditorium in the Performing Arts Center, be named the John M. Bailey Auditorium.
Board, this time, I'd like a motion to accept the recommendation from the superintendent.
Our motion that we accept the recommendation from the superintendent, that Clayton W. Mathis will be named, Performing Arts Center will be named Clayton W. Mathis. The auditorium will be named John M. Bailey.
Okay, you have a motion? Second.
My second.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Alright, at this time, if we have any family or friends for, um, Mr. Mathis, wanna come forward? Ms. Clayton, do you have a plan for this? I know you did. Alright?
First, I speak to the board.
Yes, ma'am. Glad you're here. Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I speak to my daughter, who graduated in ninety-two, and I thank you, board. I thank the earlier boards, who never gave up on the idea of a performing arts. This has been the work for a long time, and thank you for everybody staying the course of that one. Um, as all of you know, this is a room full of people who maybe were on Mr. Mathis's staff or faculty, perhaps she was a student with Mr. Mathis, or the parent of a child in a school, if you will. Clayton's basic philosophy of education was do what's right for kids. That sounds simple, but sometimes that was hard to implement, but that's exactly what it believed. I think the Performing Arts Center does right for kids, and I think it's gonna do right in our kids at Coffee High, and I love Coffee High. I love seeing the presentation tonight. This is what we wanted. Um, I can't leave this little podium without saying, for the years at Coffee Junior High, a school that no longer exists, it was every day in the trenches, all hands on deck, and there are some people in this room who were part of all hands on deck, and I have to thank this Leona Johnson, who spent as much time with my husband as I thought. But, um, Coffee Junior High was a big part of my life, and I know it's a big part of Ms. Johnson. Dr. Lee, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite everyone that's here.
The gang?
In honor of Mr. Mathis, we have a lot of our church family here, in charge of gardening.
Arts class?
Clayton was a dear friend, and I look at Clayton's life and the sacrifices he made for all types of people. I've observed that there are two kinds of people in society, givers and takers, boiled down to his base, and this school board obviously recognizes the contribution, the loyalty, and the commitment that Clayton had, and he was a giver from the start of the morning till bedtime and night.
Dr. Lee, it's time to sit.
Dr. Lee, and members of the board, uh, I'd like to thank you all on behalf of my brothers and sisters, stretched from Anchorage, Alaska, to Phoenix, to Georgia coast, this is all we can muster up for tonight. I know all the, uh, the dedication when that occurs, uh, and, um, you have no idea what an honor it is to accept that nomination, and, uh, even more, the chocolate office, uh, to be associated with the Mathis family, and I know Dad worked hand and glove, uh, with Mr. Mathis over the junior high, and he just really loved working with him, and, uh, I think it's a good combination. So, moving to Douglas was probably the best thing that happened to me in my life as a senior, and, uh, you know, you think, you don't really think about the fun of moving away from where you went to school most of the time and spending your senior year someplace else, um, but, uh, it was really a different place, and coming from Baxley Back was a nice place. Just like my dad. And our family loved it and love it to this day, and, uh, in fact, I, I loved my senior year so much, I stayed for another senior year. Obviously, they wanted to do a celebration at Africa County, but, uh, that, but that also had a good side. I met my wife, who was only a block away. Here we are today. Uh, I remember the first spring concert we had in, uh, spring of sixty-five, and, uh, it was a, it was a special group of kids, I think you saw the picture, and I was one of probably one of the first ones, tremendous concert planned, uh, with no place to play. And I think it was Larry Royals played trump, but he worked at the theater uptown at Martin, and, uh, that got him to talk to the manager and to close down the theater for one night. Uh, during the day, I don't know, probably they're all got excused absences, but, uh, me and the drum section probably. Uh, Mr. Bailey down the street at the Coke for Gold Plant let us gather up old Coke crates, and we built risers on the stage at Martin Theater for the first concert. So, it's been needed a long time, and it's a tremendous thing that what the board has done, and I thank y'all very much.
Ready?
One, two, three. One more, everybody smile. One, two, three. Got it.
Great.
Real quickly, while everyone's taking their seats, I just need to interject, I can't, I can't appreciate how much, I appreciate the input, and I would see arts communities and the families, that, um, you know, in Coffee County, we like to name everything, but I can't think of two finer things to name this facility after, their continued support for those programs, so, look forward to your support for the next fifty years too. Okay, man? Thank y'all.
We will move forward, and, and thank you all for being here tonight. We have some other, um, recognitions that we want to do tonight. At this time, we would like to call our cross-country team and our cross-country coach forward. Coach, if you want to come on up and tell us what we've got here tonight.
Alright. How y'all doing tonight?
Well, tonight, I've come up here to recognize an outstanding runner, Cameron Watson. He is, uh, he comes from a, I wanna correct that for some reason. He comes from a, a family of, uh, great runners. He's, uh, I've had the opportunity to coach his older brothers, Caleb, who now runs for Vosges State University. Um, he, uh, it's all you can say. So, last year, as a freshman, he finished second in the region. Uh, it was a good race, he was a few steps behind the kid. Um, so then, after cross-country was over, he got up and he went on the track, and he just, he got the drive to keep pushing himself harder and harder, so, and track, he holds now the sixteen hundred and the thirty-two hundred record at CHS. Um, from then, after track season ended, he really got in the groove. He, from then until the first day of practice, he put in three, four hundred and fifty-one miles of running. Then, from the start of, uh, cross-country, he, uh, completed a val-.
Well, tonight I've come up here to recognize an outstanding runner, Cameron Watson. He is, he comes from, I want to correct that for some reason, he comes from a family of great runners. He's, I've had the opportunity to coach his older brothers, Caleb, who now runs for Vados State University. He, that's all you can say. So last year, as a freshman, he finished second in the region. It was a good race, he was a few takes behind the kid. So then after cross-country was over, he got up and he went on the track and he just, he got the drive to keep pushing himself harder and harder. So in track, he holds now the sixteen-hundred and the thirty-two-hundred record at CHS. From then, after track season ended, he really got in the groove. From then until the first day of practice, he put in three, four hundred and fifty-one miles of running. Then from the start of cross-country, he completed about fifty to sixty miles a week at practice. Needless to say, when the region meet came, he finished first by a big margin, and he was very deserving of the region championship. A little nervous about it. Cameron, you're a great runner, and come on up, Cameron. I'd like to present him with this. He is the Region One Six Eight Cross-Country Champion, Cameron Watson, two thousand and eighteen. He's a good kid, he's a sophomore, he's got two more years with me, so you're going to hear his name a lot. So just if you know about running, you'll hear his name a lot when it comes around here, okay? So congratulations, buddy. Bye-bye.
Our next recognition is our REACH Scholarship, and we have Dr. Tanya Johnson here tonight, who organizes our REACH Scholarship program, and she's going to lead our recognition of these students.
Good evening. REACH stands for Realizing Educational Achievement Can Happen, and this is a needs-based scholarship program that recognizes or whose mission is to ensure that Georgia's academic-ful, promising students have the academic, social, and financial support that's needed to graduate from high school, be able to access college, and achieve post-secondary success. This is accomplished through a partnership of Georgia's public education agencies and private corporate stakeholders throughout the state. REACH scholars commit to maintaining good behavior, attendance, and core curriculum GPAs throughout middle and high, middle school and high school in order to maintain or in order to remain eligible for the REACH Scholarship. They also will meet with mentors and academic coaches monthly to develop and discuss education and career plans. And upon completion of their high schools, students will be able to receive a ten thousand dollar scholarship, which can be used at any home eligible post-secondary institution. Tonight, we'll be recognizing six students that were, that are eighth graders, that were recognized at our REACH signing ceremony back in October. And I also would like to say that, you know, we started this program back in twenty-fourteen, so we have students this year that are currently seniors, so we're excited about them. So tonight, we're going to recognize Jesli Yacena Figueroa, if you will come forward. These are our twenty-eighteen, nineteen REACH scholars. Let's give Jesli a round of applause. Jesli's parents and family will stand. Kev Mixon Henley. Hayden Douglas Hodgson. And we do have one student, Alexis Charmaine Fletcher, she was unable to be with us tonight. Coffee High School is having a band concert, so she's in band, so she wasn't able to be with us.
Well, that deserves an applause.
Congratulations scholars. I also want to say that we are soliciting mentors. We're continually, you know, asking for mentors. So I do have some applications that are going to leak some with our board, so if you know any, any of your family or people within businesses that you may be associated with that would be interested in becoming a mentor, just please reach out to myself or Ms. Sharon Lynn, she's also assisting with the program. And also want to thank, you know, Ms. Jill Pruitt, she's their academic coach, so also want to get a shout-out to our sponsors for the program this year. We have the Abba Telephone Company, Premium Peanut, Southwire, and Williams Institutional Foods are supporting these students. It's a good one.
And I would just add that our students that we just recognized, upon graduating from high school, they'll receive a ten thousand dollar scholarship to college in the state of Georgia, and it's a result of that fifteen hundred dollar donation that our donors that were recognized made. So with a fifteen hundred dollar donation from an individual or a company, then a student receives a ten thousand dollar scholarship. So if there's anybody in the audience or who's viewing on TV, if you want to support a great scholarship program, it's a needs-based scholarship program that rewards deserving students in the eighth grade. They are designated and they earn a scholarship in eighth grade, and as long as they keep their grades up, and as long as they finish high school and graduate, they'll receive that ten thousand dollar scholarship. So we're looking for donors each year that are willing to contribute to fifteen, so fifteen hundred, so keep that in mind. Thank you. Consent agenda, on the consent agenda, we have our minutes from our previous meetings, we have our financial report, out-of-state travel, the resolution for the Coffee High School renovations that were done over the summer, this will allow us to get reimbursement from the state, and then the COPS Grant Award, in which we have been awarded four hundred thousand dollars for safety and security equipment by the federal government. So this was in partnership with our local sheriff's department and the Wiregrass Technical College. So this is the COPS Grant that we're asking the board to approve and us to receive.
And that's the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I have a motion to re-accept that.
Ms. Johnson? Second. Second, Mr. Jones, any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor?
Thank you. I would ask the board that we move to an executive session, and before we do that, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. This has been a great meeting, and we sure appreciate all of your support for our auditorium at the Coffee High School Performing Arts Center, and we look forward to finishing that project and having a ribbon cutting, and we hope you all can make it whenever we have the grand opening. So thank you for being here, we're humbled at the naming and honor of Mr. Mathis and Mr. Maylin. Thank you.
At this time, do you have a motion to exit the session? Second, Mr. Jones, any discussion? All in favor?
And we will move to executive session to discuss personnel.
Thank you, board, at this time, do you have a motion to exit executive session?
I have a motion to exit executive session. My second motion.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes, sir, I would ask the board to approve the personnel as presented, but I do want to pull number nine and vote on that one separately.
Right, board, I have a recommendation on personnel, exception number nine, do you have that separate? Do you have a motion? Make a motion to approve personnel, exception number nine. Second, Madam Miller, any discussion? All in favor?
And make a motion, we accept the recommendation on number nine?
Second. Second, Madam Johnson, any discussion? All in favor?
All right, and so the personnel has been approved, and we can now move into board member recognition, and at this time, I would like to recognize Ms. Leola Johnson for her service on the Board of Education. This will be our last meeting with Ms. Johnson as a board member, and I want to recognize Ms. Johnson. Not only has Ms. Johnson been committed to her role as a school board member for District One, but she has devoted her entire professional career to the Coffee County School System. Ms. Johnson retired from the Coffee County School System in May of two thousand and five, having served over thirty years as an administrative assistant on the campus of Coffee Junior High and West Coffee Middle School. And for all who do, who know her well, not only was she the utmost professional in her role, but she was also known to keep Mr. Street straight, and that, those are his words, those are his words. Ms. Johnson came on to the board after the passing of Mr. Ronnie Johnson. She was sworn in on May sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen, and very quickly adapted to her new role. We sincerely appreciate all that Ms. Johnson has done while serving on the school board and professionally. We know she will continue to be a supporter of our school system and our boys and girls, and I mean it from the heart. You've been a great board member, and you've served your constituents well, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
I have a little gift here. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, oh, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it is done, pleasure, as well as an honor, the service of this board. Coffee County Schools with my heart. I love the faculty, the staff, the students, and I've learned to love all of you.
Hard to love.
Hard to love, but I have, I have enjoyed working with this board, and I feel that we've accomplished a lot working together, and I can appreciate you trusting me and listening to me even when I fuss, but we're family, and I shall never forget you. You made a lasting impression on them, and I know the boys and girls of Coffee County are blessed to have you looking out for them, and I'll still be around.
I'd like to say just before chair, how much I've appreciated you stepping into the REACH following the loss of Mr. Johnson, who became a good friend to all of us here as we've served with him, but was a long, long service to his community. And I know we had a lively and robust discussion this evening as well, and that says a lot that you, you still continue to contribute to what's best for kids at Coffee County. We appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
At this time, I would ask that we adjourn the meeting?
Any board member comments?
Then I was just going to say, you know, I mean, I could sit here and talk all night and compliment Ms. Johnson for the job she's done, but I got two things that I want to say that kind of stand out about the last year and a half with her. One is, it's very difficult when you come on this board, like for me, I was a parent, you know, business people. You come on this board and this school system, there's a lot of information you have to learn very quickly to be able to make an educated decision on things. You have to know something to be able to make an educated decision. I think out of the school system, I get on the board, I realize there's a lot I've got to learn, you know. You know, we needed a board member quickly. We appointed Ms. Johnson, she walks in here with forty years' worth of experience. She's not only ready to work day one like all of us were, she was capable of working day one. And she came in here with forty years of experience, she knew how the school system worked, she knew what decisions needed to be made, things that will work. There were a lot of times we would have what we thought was a good decision, and she'd say, "We did that fifteen years ago, it didn't work." There was a wealth of knowledge that she automatically stepped onto this board and brought to us for the last year and a half, and I appreciate that. The second thing that stands out with her is that she's been here for a year and a half. Obviously, there's, in a year and a half, there's going to be decisions that you've got your opinion, I've got my opinion, but you always brought something forth, it was well thought out, you pleaded your case, you stated your opinion, and then we moved on. In a year and a half, there were many decisions that maybe you didn't agree with me on, and we had different opinions, but at the same time, in a year and a half, we never had an argument. And that's something to say. It didn't matter if I came in here and I raised my hand with her on the vote, we moved on after that. If I didn't raise my hand with her on the vote, we moved on after that. And that's something that sometimes is understated on these boards, everybody's got their own opinion, everybody's got their own thoughts, you know. Express your opinion, express your thoughts, vote it, move on. And sometimes we don't do that. She has done an excellent job of working with everybody on this board. I've had the pleasure of working with you, you know, it's, you know, I hate to see you go, I know you're still going to be around, but I thoroughly enjoyed working with you.
Thank you.
That makes up, you called my mom and then back. When you was in Mr. Street's office and I get in front of you, you called and told me, but you know, you made up for it. We're back even again.
Anything else? You enjoyed working with Mr. Wood, you're easy to work with.
See, see how different Jesse and I are?
We definitely had enough tears tonight for joyful reasons, and I think we are all in agreement, we are better for having worked with you, and we appreciate you very much.
Well, I do want to thank everybody for coming out for the Nichols Ribbon Cutting. Earlier today, we had a ribbon cutting ceremony at Nichols Elementary School, and it was a really great occasion, and thank you everybody for participating in that. And also, we have the holidays coming up, Christmas and New Year's are driving around the corner. Everybody have a great Christmas holiday and fantastic New Year, and we'll see everybody back in two thousand and nineteen. Thank you.